Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Pierce County Council meeting in the committee of the whole for the purposes of a budget discussion. It is Thursday, October 5th, 2023. The time is 9:33 a.m. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Pruever.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Excused.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Excused.
And Councilmember Mello.
Here.
You have five members present.
We have five members present and a quorum. Well, our agenda this morning's committee of the whole is focused on the really important work and important budget of the Pierce County Sheriff's Department for 2024 and 2025. We have our Sheriff, Ed Schreuer, and his command staff with us this morning. Sheriff, we're really grateful to have you and your leadership team to discuss the Sheriff Department's proposed 2024-2025 budget. I'm going to ask Mr. Bokey to help me introduce this item.
Thank you very much, Chair Mello, Paul Bokey, council staff. We also have William Bridges here, principal analyst. He is in, this is his area of expertise. So today, we will have the Sheriff's Department, both the Sheriff's Department and the Corrections Bureau, make their presentations. You should have their PowerPoint. I'll note in the budget book, Sheriff Corrections begins in the Public Safety tab on Section 7, page 22, and Sheriff Law Enforcement begins in Section 7, page 25. There's also Marine Services that's on page 16 of that, and they may touch on some other areas today. You also have the decision packet. It starts with Sheriff Corrections after the prosecuting attorney, and then it goes into, so the final couple pages actually deal with the Sheriff's Department, both Corrections and the department itself. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I believe we have Sheriff Troyer here to make some opening remarks.
Thank you. And Sheriff, before we let you take it from here, I failed to ask for approval of our agenda this morning. So this morning is all about the Sheriff's Department budget. Is there any objection to our agenda as presented? I'm not seeing any. Our agenda is approved. And so with that, Sheriff Troyer, welcome.
Thank you. And I'd like to start off by thanking the county executive, the council, and budget and finance for how well we all work together. It's been proven over the last three years that we can take major problems and take care of business really quickly through creative solutions. We do a lot with a little, and I think the success has shown when you look at my staff. We've had zero turnover in the last three years. I have the same staff as I started with. As we continue to grow in numbers, as other departments go down in numbers, in the last two or three weeks, I've sworn in 15 people. We've graduated some from the academy. This is including both Corrections and the Patrol side, and our current list has 228 people on it, which is the highest we've had in years. So when we go to the academy to graduation to see our people, we run into people from other agencies that approach all of us and said, I wanted to work for Pierce County. It was my first choice. We got a job offer from them or this other agency first. So we have fixed that hole. So now we're the first ones out of the box offering people jobs. As you can see over the years, when everybody's abandoning departments, going to other departments, we lost seven or eight people for high-paying jobs, and of those seven or eight, all but one have come back to our department because the grass isn't always greener. So Pierce County is a place to work and live. As we continue to identify problems in the community, whether it be habitual criminals, whether it be staffing, we come up with creative solutions. And as we work on those creative solutions, we push on the backend of Corrections because we're so successful at catching people, kind of crowd the jail. So we're really trying to do a really good thing at looking at habitual criminals, car thieves. As you know, recently, the numbers continue to skyrocket on that. And throughout the next year, we have some great programs that we're going to put together through the use of this budget to try and take the habitual offenders off the street and the high-prolific criminals that we think will make a big dent in the overall crime and the livability of Pierce County. One of the things that we did that was really good this year is we filled our Health and Wellness Officer position, and that has been a huge success by the amount of people that turn out to the meetings. And you'll hear more about that later from Chief Kevin Roberts. I remember last year when we asked for that position, both the county executive and the county council said, you sure you only want one? Well, it's come to tuition that we are going to need more than one eventually to make it work right, but we're building the program with one. And I'm guessing before the next two years is up, we'll be back asking for another position because it's doing so much good in our department. A couple of the other things that we're asking for is we're asking to convert a couple deputies into OA positions. And the reason being is because there's so much legislation, mandatory reporting to criminal justice, public disclosure, and different items that have occurred in the last couple of years that are mandated that we have to take care of on the front end, or we're going to end up in litigation and have to do more money, time, and energy on the backend. So by converting these positions, and you'll hear more detail about that, we think to alleviate those problems by having those two positions, and you'll hear more about that. I know that we've decreased the number of positions to make the budget, but that doesn't mean we're not going to come back and ask for those positions in the future. We just know that by the time we get those positions filled, there's ways that we can spend the money now to help keep Pierce County safe, keep our deputies safe, and grow our agency and grow our programs. And when we get to that position, we'll be the first one knocking on the door, asking for more FTEs and full-time deputies. So what I want to do now is turn it over to Lauren Wallen. Kind of our master ceremonies are going to keep things moving along, and we'll all be available for questions when you have time or whenever you want to ask them, and at the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thanks for making time to be with us. Chief of Staff, Lauren Wallen, letting you know that we'll manage the time together this morning, and we'll take a morning recess when appropriate so that the team can have a break and we can make sure we have the energy to focus on this really important discussion this morning. So welcome.
Okay, great. Thank you. Again, I'm Lauren Wallen. I'm our chief of staff for the Sheriff's Department. I want to thank you all for stuff, for just the time this morning and the amount of energy and time that you all are going to be putting into this after this meeting to carefully consider the things that we're asking for today. We know that there's some tough reductions that we have been asked to make, and we're also asking to have some conversions so that we can do things more efficiently. And as the sheriff mentioned, also preparing for not only the needs for today, but also what we see as the coming needs in the near future. Now, we can go to the first slide, please. As we look at the council's priorities for the 2024 budget session, we are primarily focused on public safety, and that's what we're here to talk to you about today. It's how we can believe we can be, our resources can best be used to serve the public safety needs of our community. Next slide, please. We have provided the requested organizational chart, and as the sheriff had mentioned, we've had great stability over the last three years in our leadership, which has provided, again, consistency throughout our department. It's been a really great thing for us to have that. You'll notice that the organizational chart also reflects the addition of the wellness coordinator since the last time we were here doing a budget presentation, as well as the two majors, one in Corrections and one in Patrol. They are both here today as part of our presentation. Next slide, please. As you're aware, our department is divided into four bureaus: the Administrative Services Bureau, the Corrections Bureau, Criminal Investigations, and Patrol. Today, you'll be hearing from the chiefs of three of these bureaus about the needs that they have and how you can help us to address these needs. Next slide, please. And as requested, here is our current budgeted FTEs for the four bureaus. You can see that this includes both our commissioned and our non-commissioned professional staff. Later on in this presentation, we will discuss some of our staffing challenges to include vacancies, but also our efforts in hiring and recruiting and how those are working out for us. Next slide, please. We were asked to identify our critical needs and challenges for 2024 and 2025. During this presentation, you will hear from three of our bureau chiefs. They'll be sharing with you the problems and solutions to address critical needs in each of their bureaus. This includes staffing and hiring, wellness and resilience, litigations and records management, regional intelligence, and enhancing our body-worn cameras and TASER program. Next slide, please. We've provided a summary of our budget decision packages for Corrections on this slide. These will be explained further by Chief Patty Jackson during her section. She'll talk about conversions of positions and reductions as requested by council. The next slide provides a summary of our budget decision packages for law enforcement. These will also be explained in great detail by Chief Nick Hausner and Chief Kevin Roberts. And we'll be happy to take any questions at that time on these. The third slide contains a summary of our 117 funds, as well as ARPA funding, which was used to provide hiring and referral incentives. This has been vital during our staffing crisis, which, as you know, has been a both regional issue and a nationwide issue. Chief Nick Hausner will provide detailed information on how those ARPA funds have been used and some of the successes that we've seen recently in hiring. I know the sheriff mentioned some of those. We've seen great successes, especially over the last couple of weeks, that we're very excited about. Up next is our proposed FTE changes. This includes several conversions. It's important to note that we are only asking for new positions that have been, we've been unable to fill and have been a vacancy that has been longstanding for the last couple of years. We are willing to convert these positions to fill a critical need in our department. This includes 12 positions in Corrections, which will nine through budget reductions and three conversions, and in law enforcement, 14 positions, 12 through budget reductions, two through conversions, and then we will be adding one position through conversion, which is a forensics detective sergeant. Our ARPA activities, again, as we had mentioned, these are fully focused on the referral and incentive program. Hiring and retention, as you know, has been critical and incredibly competitive. Corrections and law enforcement hiring practices have become borderline predatory as they're constantly looking to see what are other agencies doing and how can we up the ante on others. This is in referral bonuses. This is for laterals. This is for Corrections and in Patrol. At the same time, as that's been happening, we've also seen our candidate pool diminishing. Less people are interested in a career in law enforcement. There's a lot of different barriers that are preventing people from having a career in law enforcement. As Chief Hausner will talk about, it's important to us that we maintain some of our standards and our values in hiring so we have people that can best serve our community's needs. Next is budget reductions, and again, we'll talk about this in greater detail as each of our bureau chiefs comes up to explain the needs within their bureau. For these budget reductions, our only option was to meet the required cuts, was to reduce our FTEs. It's incredibly important to note that we believe and we know that all of our current FTE positions are critical in our ability to provide law enforcement and correction services for the needs of our county's residents. As the sheriff had mentioned, when we fill our vacancies, we fully intend to return to the council and county leadership with a request to restore all of our converted or eliminated positions in our budget. As you may be aware, earlier this week in Thurston County, just one county south of us, their sheriff announced a staffing crisis and a staffing emergency within their department due to vacancies. During those news articles and press release, it was quoted that they were the second lowest staff Sheriff's Department in the state of Washington. As you probably know, the Sheriff's Department here in Pierce County is the lowest and has been for many, many years. We are already critically understaffed with our current numbers to meet our growing population here in Pierce County, and as we've seen violent crime going up significantly as well as property crime. Not only are we the lowest in the state, Washington State is the lowest in the country. It is 51st in the nation for the number of officers per residence. So when we look at these reductions, we take this very, very seriously. The next slide goes to our items not completed from the 2022-2023 budget. You will see that there are three items that are on there. The first one is hiring of an internal affairs detective. We still do believe that we have the need for that position, but we have not been able to fill it due to vacancies. We've had to leave several positions open, both in detectives and patrol, due to that. It is our hope, as our staffing levels continue to go up, that we will fill that position. The other two items are the construction of a new mountain detachment and moving of our property room. Both of those items have been moved from the Sheriff's Department budget over to facilities budget, as there's continued work that's being done in preparing for those moves and construction. The next four slides are focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I know this is something that's very important to the county, to the county council, and to the county executive. Our department's activities in DEI over the last two years have been primarily focused on transparency through the implementation of our body camera program, which I think you've seen has been highly successful. We consider ourselves a leader in transparency for that and sharing a lot of those body camera images and focused on public education through our activities on social media, community outreach, and also working with regular media. We've also focused on diversity efforts in our recruiting, which Chief Nick Hausner will talk about a bit more, reflecting a lot more of the diversity of our community and hiring, both in Corrections and in law enforcement, a workforce that is reflective of the community that we serve. We've also done a lot of training in our department. I'm really proud to say that we applied for a grant and received that for all of our supervisors, and we're working on having all of our staff go through bias training, diversity training, which has been really successful. I've completed several of those courses, and I was very excited to hear both the conversation and dialogue that happened there, especially the conversation afterwards from our department members who participated in that and what they learned. I think that was really great, both for internal communications and for external communications as well. All right. At this point, I am going to toss it over to Chief Nick Hausner, who's going to come up and talk a little bit more about our body-worn camera program and how we're looking at really bridging that DEI policies into our body-worn camera and expanding that in 2024 and 2025.
Thank you. Before you do that, Ms. Wallen, are there questions from Ms. Wallen of anything we've heard so far before we get into the individual bureau chiefs' presentations? Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. Just going back to the reduction of officers, correction deputies, some people out here listening today may think like, oh, wow, we're defunding in a time where stuff's happening right now. We're not actually, these positions probably, if I'm remembering, especially with Corrections, we've never always been 100% filled, and these weren't anticipated to be filled in the next year or two. So I just want to make people sure that you're not eliminating positions in a time where we need more.
Yep. We really believe that all of our currently budgeted FTEs are vital and very much needed, but we understand that their tough budget decisions have to be made. And when we were directed to make budget reductions, the only place that we could see that that could happen is within our FTE count. And we knew that these were positions that had been vacant, had been vacant for a while. We looked at our hiring projections, where we're at right now, where we think we will be at the end of 2024 and at the end of 2025, and we believe that it would be very challenging for us to fill all of the positions that we currently have for vacancies. As mentioned by the sheriff, and also, and I stated earlier, it is our full intention that when our hiring numbers get to that and we are seeing really positive indications, that we will be coming back and asking to have all of these positions be restored in our budget.
Another question would be additional to that is, I can't remember how many deputies there were, but, so in the last few years, I'm sure, I haven't been here, only been here a year, but I'm sure we've progressed up in number of deputies. I guess, what year are we going back to? Was it 12 deputies or was it nine that were coming?
That we're looking at reducing? It would be 12.
Well, 12 deputies. So how many years ago was it that we didn't have these 12? Long time? Or I don't know if last budget we added?
Yeah, a long time.
Okay. I guess it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it would be.
About the Great Recession.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I would guess it would probably be around 2008, 2009.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. Vice Chair Campbell.
And thank you, Councilmember Herrera, and thank you all for taking time to come up here and talk with us today. Traditionally, when the budget has actually come to us, and many here can affirm this, the council's actually added more than what the executive has sent to us. We've been very bullish in making sure that we have the funding available to hire the deputies that we need. The hiring of the deputies has always been more difficult than we've been willing to fund, and I believe the Sheriff's Department, and I think this is still in play, that actually has the authority to over-hire their budget. And so if they hit the budget and they're not able to come to us, but they got a great applicant, they can go out and get those applicants and get them in the system while we come back and fix the budget, and it's the only department that's allowed to do that. So there are some.
You are correct, and we absolutely plan to take advantage of that if and when we get there.
So they're, want to make sure that narratives out there versus what we're doing are clear. I do, Sheriff Troyer, when you let off, you said every other department is going down while we're increasing numbers. I know Tacoma's increased their numbers, and so, because I've been watching them closely. So they've increased their numbers, we've increased their numbers. So who's all going down? Because I know that the other, and you all can follow up with me on this one, because I don't expect you know Lakewood, Puyallups, and all of theirs, but I know that, you know, that's when we need to do an all-call, that those departments being properly staffed is important to our ability in an emergency situation. And so if I could get kind of a follow-up, maybe a detail on some of the other cities as to which ones are losing their officers, how much they're down, since, like, we're the only one coming up, that what they're doing to do that and how they plan to get back on track.
We can definitely provide that for you in follow-up. We do know that several other large departments in the region are continuing to lose numbers. We certainly saw from just in the media coverage earlier this week about what's going on in Thurston County right now as they're continuing to lose folks. And it's hard because you have people that leave because they just decide maybe law enforcement isn't for them anymore. You also have different hiring trends where you'll have a lot of folks that will suddenly retire that maybe you didn't expect. People are retiring a lot younger also than we saw in years past. So those are some of the challenges that kind of ebb and flow, so to speak, but we can certainly can provide those numbers for you. Thank you for asking.
And absolutely. If someone decides that this isn't their job that they wake up and want to do every day, then we, you know, go talk to our wellness coordinator, but if it's not, if you don't have a passion for it anymore, you know, let's have a conversation. It might not be the right thing for you. So we know that's where mistakes get made. You did cover the AI and animal control will be coming up. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We will be getting into detail on each and every decision package by the bureau chiefs.
Yes.
Along with the ARPA requests, so I don't see any other hands, so I think we're ready to proceed.
Okay, very good. Then I will hand it over to Chief Nick Hausner.
Thank you. Good morning, Chief Hausner.
Good morning. Chief Nick Hausner, I'm the Chief of Administrative Services for the Sheriff's Office. Thanks for having us up today. The first thing I'd like to talk about is our Axon Body-Worn Camera and TASER program. We haven't submitted a budget proposal on this or a decision packet on this. However, we have an opportunity to take advantage of an offer from Axon, and so we're still exploring it a little bit, so we might be coming back at you regarding this opportunity. What we're trying to do is increase our efficiency and our accountability and our transparency with the use of the Axon products. Chief Lauren Wallen just explained about how we're using our body camera program to increase transparency, and some of the features of some of the new cameras that are coming out will help with increasing that transparency and also have some other features that we feel will be beneficial. Regarding efficiency, on the top of the bullet point there is the use of third-party playback. I'd have somebody explain this to me, so I'll try to do my best to explain it to you. So the Axon product allows for businesses and people that have video software to submit electronically, increasing our efficiency, right? So to have to chase down this video, they can transfer it electronically to us. And then this third-party playback thing that Axon has doesn't require some additional software, right? So every system is different, so to watch video for a specific system, you have to have a specific playback module or something. And so this will allow that video to easily be viewed within our system without having to go out and get all those different playback modules.
Chief Hausner, in layperson's terms.
Yes.
Are you?
You know?
No, I don't.
Oh, I thought you were going to explain it to me.
No, I'm going to attempt to ask a rookie question to try to, are we, so someone's Ring Doorbell or ADT camera, be able to download that at home or my business and get it to you somehow?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly, electronically. So we give them a link, and then they can upload their video from their system to our Axon system electronically, and then we're able to play it back without having to go out and buy additional viewers or playback systems, is how I understand it. So, me and you. Other efficiencies is an early upgrade of our dash cameras and body cameras, and also to, they will also included in that contract will be all the supplies, right? So everything you need, camera goes bad, you need new batteries, you need new cartridges, whatever you need is included, would be included in the new contract. So there are some efficiencies. Some of that efficiencies, I'm going to jump right down to transparency on that efficiency because we talked about the early upgrade, and that is the third, the second bullet point down there on transparency is the new cameras that they'll provide us under the new contract have a wider field of view. So it's going to be able to capture more of what's in the officer's perception than it does now. So these, this new technology will allow that. And then there's also better communication between the dash cameras in the car and the box that records everything, and so there's less likelihood that there's going to be skips in the video or a mistake is going to happen, it's not going to be recorded properly because of some sort of connection issue. So there's better resilience in that. So that's the great thing on the early update. Also, I don't think I put it on the slide here, but also, our current contract, there's $300,000 that they're going to credit if we sign a new contract before the end of the year. From our current contract, they're going to credit forward to the new contract. So that's a significant savings there, and that's why the first 2024 funding need is less than the 2025 funding need. So they're going to credit that into the new contract for year one, which would be a benefit. Also, under efficiency, the new dash cameras will have the automatic license plate reader technology built in, so it's kind of a flock system on wheels in that it will be able to check license plates for missing people, stolen cars, wanted individuals that are linked to their cars. There's a new program regarding serious hit-and-run collisions where those license plates can be uploaded into the system, and all these cameras out there driving around the community will be able to see and then alert officers when there's a hit on that camera. So that technology is in, with the new dash cameras that we'd get under this new product. That doesn't work with our current ones. And then again, the combining of the contracts, because we currently have a camera contract and a TASER contract, we'll combine those. Cameras is under IT, county IT. Tasers is under the Sheriff's Department. We've combined those contracts, move them all over to IT. So it'd be managed in one place instead of, Axon would all be managed with IT instead of the Sheriff's Office.
Administratively.
Administratively, yes, just for the contracts and to make the purchases and make all that happen, which was very successful with our body camera program, so. And then regarding.
Director Robinson's not going to be teaching people how to.
Maybe.
Maybe.
We'll give them a taste. Accountability, so one of the challenges that we've had with the Sheriff's Department is ensuring that body cameras, it's new to us, dash cameras is new to us. Deputies in the field have to record some information and get it uploaded. We've had a little bit of difficulty making sure that the deputies get the information correct and that they do it timely, so the new system under the new contract will have automatic emails to make sure that they're keeping up on what they need to do, so that'll be more efficient for us. One of the big things, and this is my favorite thing, I think, is I think everybody's aware that if a deputy draws their pistol, their body camera turns on automatically. Well, tasers, it doesn't work that way, right? You can have your TASER out, your body camera doesn't come on, you could activate your TASER, you could Taser somebody, and your body camera can be completely off. Under the new system, the TASER and your body camera talk to each other, and if you turn on your TASER, the body camera automatically comes on. So if there's an encounter with a citizen where a TASER is turned on under a high-stress incident, you know, sometimes you forget to push the button. This way, we ensure that that incident is captured on body camera. So that helps us with accountability because mistakes do happen. That limits the chance of a mistake happening in a high-stress incident. And then the last under accountability there is that supervisors will be able to livestream dash and body camera. Currently, supervisors are incapable of livestreaming any camera activity right now. Our next upgrade with the dash camera, I think Axon's next upgrade regarding their software for the dash cameras was going to allow, I think, the dash cameras to be done, but this will also allow, or maybe it's my search, I apologize, but this will allow for both platforms to be able to be livestreamed by supervisors. be live streamed by supervisors in an emergency situation. So if they can't get a hold of a deputy, or things, they think things are getting out of control, they can live stream in and see what's going. And then we kind of talked about transparency a little bit, but the automatic activation of the Taser again helps us with transparency to make sure that we're recording all of those incidents that we need to be recording. We talked about the better coverage, but that also has better quality of video. So the video itself is going to be a better quality than what we currently have in addition to having that greater field of view. And then the last one is that the accountability, the Taser or Axon will have a public facing website that they'll help us with regarding our automatic license plate reader data. So that'll all be transparent and out there for the public.
We have a question about what we've just learned here on the Axon body camera request. We'll start with Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you. And I know that this is about the program, we're here about budgets, so I'll keep this kind of narrow in scope. Just want to be sure, and I think you covered it, so the camera, in case it has been turned off for whatever reason, Taser comes out, it auto turns on, that already happens with Service Weapon?
Yes, it does. So there's a little, little device here on the holster, and the device detects that the pistol's been removed from the holster, the camera comes on automatically, as does everybody else that sits near me.
Okay. And with regard to adding the LPR and the live streaming, are you going to need to come back to council for any policy updates? Or are we going to need to do any changes in code to?
No, I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
Okay. Just, I know that a lot of times there are certain areas that don't allow certain things, and there might be paths. So before we get them on the street, let's just make sure we do a code review to make sure that we're all in compliance because it's a little more invasive into the person's private lives as we're automatically scanning everyone's license plates as we're able to drop into a live conversation. Understand why we can do some of these things, but that starts to get into some of the policy areas that we may to make, need to make sure that we have just updated codes.
We've already, within, within the Sheriff's Department's policy, we've already addressed previously with our negotiations with the Deputy Sheriff's Unions and our other unions regarding the dropping in on the cameras. So we've addressed that already. And with regard to the scanning, I believe that we're fine because all of our cars are like in public spaces and the officer would be able to see the license plate anyway. So I think we're pretty settled on that.
Maybe something to come back to committee just to get a full understanding because state laws change and all that, some privacy concerns. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Constable Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. A quick question on the ALPRs. With the data that needs to get entered in it, is it, is it connected to your report, reporting system of a one person connected to this license plate? Or is it an actual staff member entering that stuff into the system? And is that covered within this bundle?
I, I believe that it's the automatic. So when the warrant is entered into WSEC and NCIC, that that information can be simultaneously put into the database for Axon. So we're still working out a lot of the details on this, especially with regard to the license plate readers. But I think it's automatic so that there won't be a significant staff increase.
Okay.
And I, and I know Sound 911 already does the list for the stolen cars.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Constable Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chief, for being here. My question is around people being able to upload footage. And I know you're feeling a little like not quite sure. My question is about if it's going into our systems, we now own that, so it falls under our delightful public records. And so I was just wondering on that end, if suddenly every neighbor can submit through the system their Ring cameras and all of that, does that, are there any concerns about the staffing on the redaction and all of that?
Well, there's always concern about staffing and redactions. However, they can only submit the information when we give them the link. So it's not like everybody, we just don't say, sometimes we do say. So you've probably seen on our social media, hey, we had this traffic collision fatality, if you have video, upload it. And then we have detectives that will triage that and then decide. But you're absolutely right. So somebody could do exactly what you're suggesting.
And then I think one of the things that Axon provided was maybe a digital ability to do some of that redaction. It didn't take a person, whether it was like license plates or faces if there are minors. Is that something it can do to the other footage? I know stuff that comes through their system.
I believe it is. So I believe it's all under the same, so once it gets into Axon, then the redaction tools within the Axon system can be applied to any video within the Axon system.
Okay. That sounds delightful and very useful. Thank you.
Thank you. Might be a question for your Chief of Staff, who I know tracks this for you, but to, to your knowledge, is the, are there dollars from state or federal sources to help offset the revenue needed to pay for a request like this? It sounds like you've explained it very compellingly, very worthy expenditure for all the reasons. Is, is there an opportunity for other, other revenues? There's a lot of funds flowing from state and federal government.
Whistling indicates potentially.
Are you aware of anything, Chief of Staff, Warren?
So I do monitor very closely funding sources, especially for grants. Most of what I've seen related to grant funding, both at a state level and a federal level, is to start body camera programs. It's really for that, that seed money initially to start them up. I'd be curious to see now that it is becoming the standard in law enforcement, if we start seeing that tide kind of turn where then now there's starting to be opportunities for enhancing that. So that's some, definitely something that we'll be looking towards. We're very excited to see this. This was just presented to us about two weeks ago, hence the reason that it's kind of gotten slipped into here. But we were incredibly excited. We look at the potential for things like Amber Alerts for missing persons, endangered persons, the Silver Alerts, missing endangered persons alerts. You know, if we've got a homicide suspect, if we had a school shooting, God forbid, that we would be able to put that information into NCIC and then to have our vehicles out. But you know, we talked about like the flock on wheels, where instead of us investing and buying 10 cameras or 20 cameras in specific locations, that these will be in our cars out throughout our entire community looking for either our most endangered folks or our most dangerous folks. So we're really excited about this. And I mean, the Taser, with having that now be the new functioning on that, and there's a lot more things we could talk about with some of the different enhancements that they've put forth on that. But having just that, that interfacing with the camera system, that's, that's really exciting for us to see that and to know that we're fully capturing all of those. Again, you also talked about with the video tagging possibility, that capabilities that come with this, where now we have sometimes hundreds of videos that our folks are having to go through, both our IT folks, but also our deputies. They're spending a lot of time going back and finding videos that for some reason didn't get linked to a case number. We don't know what they're from. And then having to watch through all those videos and try to track back, okay, what was this from? And then tagging it in there, that this will eliminate that tremendous workload for our IT staff and also for our public disclosure folks as well and for our deputies. So the efficiency possibilities with that are very exciting. As we look at records management, we look at litigation, we look at just getting evidence to our prosecutor's office as well, that this really plugs some of those gaps that we saw in the product as we've been out using it over the last year and a half.
Thank you for explaining that. And also thank you for further explaining why this opportunity just presented itself and does not show up in the decision packages that are for our review. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions about this slide 19. So if you don't have anything else on this one, Chief?
Just one other thing. And Chief Lauren mentioned, Lauren Wallen mentioned that some additional efficiencies with the Tasers, the new, so our current Tasers, most of them are no longer warranted by the company. So they're, they're to that obsolete phase. They still work. They just don't work as well as the new technology. So the, the new Tasers are significantly more effective, which means that when a Taser is more effective, it's less likely to have to rise to other levels of force to have a suspect come into custody. So, and the new Tasers also have different range settings. So you can have one Taser, because the Tasers we have, they have different cartridges for different distances where you have to, right? And the new Taser can almost instantaneously switch from different distances, not automatically, but with an, an action by the officer, so that it's quickly can be, so there's a lot more success with the Tasers. So, which can reduce injury. That was it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next slide. Ready? Thank you. So the next is conversion from a law enforcement deputy position to a legal assistant four. What we're trying to address here is the Sheriff's Department's increased litigation, reporting requirements, and workloads that are being basically pushed out of administrative staff to commissioned deputy staff. The Sheriff's Department's litigation is 73% of all litigation in the county. So most, most litigation is a result of Sheriff's Department action or inaction in some cases. And 53% of that is within the Patrol Bureau. So there's a lot of data management that we have to deal with, with complying with discovery requests, requests for productions, answering interrogatories, and then also the new reporting requirement for the Criminal Justice Training Commission regarding decertification. So that's all, that's a significant increase in workload. We've kind of split it up. I do some of it, Chief Roberts does some of it, and our Internal Affairs Unit does some of it, this reporting, which can include gathering significant amounts of documents, the same with the litigation, right? So a discovery request comes in, and then we're, usually for litigation, are trying to manage locating these documents. And so what this, what this staff will, staff member will do is help with all of that. They will evaluate all the requests, they'll assist in identifying where the information resides, manage all the responses and all litigation, and be a single point of contact. We kind of have it bifurcated now, as I explained. And if we have a single point of contact, we're just going to be more efficient. And there can be significant penalties with not providing this documentation timely. So our effort is going to be to try and make sure we're more responsive, and we think this is probably the best way to do it.
And you're showing this in the decision package as not having any fiscal costs, the same cost of a deputy as the same cost of a legal assistant four?
It's actually a little bit less.
A little bit of a budget savings.
Yes, but that, I think that budget, that budget savings is going someplace else in our decision packets to make up a deficit within a packet.
Making sure our budget team is tracking?
I think the, it's $32,800.
Less.
Less. And then I believe that money is going toward, I think, to the detective forensics, Detective Sergeant for the forensics that Chief Roberts will be speaking to in a minute.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell.
Just wrapping my head around that a little bit right there, and I'm trying to, are we overall asking for an increase in deputies that'll be out on the street in patrol or a decrease?
So this, for this position or overall?
Just overall.
Overall, it would be a decrease of deputies of the ones that we can't currently hire, right? So the, so we have X number of vacancies that we can't fill currently or that we're striving to fill. We're asking for a reduction of that number of deputies. But when we get to the point that we can fill that, then we're going to come back and ask for those to be replenished.
So we're kind of cutting that number back by two here, it's one and the next one. But if you had a chance to hire that deputy position we're cutting, you'd take it?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't, I don't know if we're actually, we're adding an FTE and legal assistant, which may be fine in its own, but to say that we're reducing by someone who we would hire anyways is-
Well, there's, there's no budget to make that hire, but as you mentioned earlier, the over hire would come into play. And then if the council said at that point, well, you can have no more money, then who can hire that person?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Questions about this slide 20?
All right, next slide, please. So the next position we'd like to talk about is the Corrections Deputy Conversion to an HR Specialist. We've, we've learned through this long process of having significant number of vacancies, that early contact and early processing of candidates, the sheriff mentioned earlier about other, other hires going to other agencies because they've been contacted or solicited first by a different agency. And what we're trying to do is the current civil service staff in HR is one person, lowly understaffed, lot, lot of work to do both with these, you'll see in a slide in a minute, the number of applicants that we're receiving now compared to a few years ago. So the workload has just increased immensely. And in addition to that workload of processing all those candidates and making contact with those candidates, there's also the promotional requirements of the Sheriff's Department, testing, civil service testing and processing of those, those applicants. So this position will help that current civil service position in processing and having frequent contact with the candidates within the process before they are referred to the Sheriff's Department. So the Sheriff's Department wants this, comes out of civil service, kind of a separate process within civil service, and then they are, the list is provided to the Sheriff's Department where we can then start the background process. Our hope is that with increased staff in HR, that there will be more frequent contact, some care and nurturing, making sure that they understand the process, what to expect moving forward. And we're, we're hopeful that this new position will help with that. Our switch from National Testing Network to Public Safety Testing has seen positive results in that, those number of candidates going up, plus our increased recruiting efforts have seen positive results. So we're hoping to continue that trend, and with that trend is obviously more work. And then we're, we've made significant investments in changing our testing network and our recruiting and all of that. And we hate to see a loss in that investment by losing candidates to other agencies because we can't get them, we like to say, in the boat. We can't get them in the boat. So we're hoping that this will help us get those candidates in the boat, committed to us early. We hear stories all the time that State Patrol is making contact with candidates that pass the test within days, you know, and we're lucky if we make contact within weeks or months. So our hope is to fill that gap. And then in addition to that is that processing of promotional opportunities within the Sheriff's Department. Retirements just don't come from the deputy rank, they come from the sergeant rank, they come from the lieutenant rank. So detective, sergeant, detective. So when a detective retires and we need to promote a new detective, we have to have a written test, we have to have an assessment center, there has to be a process, there should be decisions made. So that is, that testing process and assessment center is all managed by civil service. So that's that one employee doing all this with new hire, hires, and then also the promotionals for all those different positions within the Sheriff's Department. So that's our goal with this conversion.
Thank you, Chief. Constable Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I think you just explained the additional work they'll be doing. So I don't think they're going to be doing this, but this is learning for me. I know there's a lot of required training for our deputies, both in corrections and patrol through the Washington State Bureau. What, who manages that? So this person wouldn't do that, but I'm assuming there's-
So, so we manage all of our required training through our training unit. So we have a dedicated training unit that manages-
Correct. Thank you.
Every piece of required training.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Producer, Mr. Bokey, when we go to section seven of the budget book, seven, section seven, pages 27 and 28, where we see the staffing summary for Sheriff Law Enforcement, where would I see this position, this Human Resources Specialist show up? I'm not seeing it quickly.
Human Resources position, it's actually transferred.
Transferred, sir.
Oh, sorry, I missed, sorry for missing that.
That's, that, yeah, I was just, it's actually when Human Resources and their budget highlights.
I think I need a new microphone, please.
His microphone.
His, his microphone is not on. Excuse me.
Oh, no, it's, thank you very much, Chair Mill.
Managing too much this morning.
The, the position that is being discussed is, is actually, the Sheriff's Department is giving up a position, the position will actually be housed in Human Resources. So when, on page, in, in, in section five, page 24, it, it says a Human Resource Analyst Position and transfers a vacant position from the Sheriff's- and transfers a vacant position from the sheriff's department to support the sheriff's department's hiring process. So when human resources comes in, they can also discuss whether or not, how long they think it'll take to hire that individual. But I was looking for that same thing. I was wondering where it was at. But it is actually a new position over in human resources rather than the sheriff's department. So the sheriff's department is actually losing a position.
I see that now. Thank you. And but they're under your direction so that you get what you need out of them?
Not really. We work in cooperation. Civil service is independent, so the whole purpose of civil service is to make sure that the process is fair for every single candidate coming in. And, you know, I don't know a lot about the history, but in times past, sheriff's department used to be kind of a good old boy system. Oh, you're my buddy, I'll hire you. And the idea of civil service is to make sure that that process is fair and that qualified candidate gets hired and everybody's, it's fair. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Sheriff Heeb is the chief civil service examiner, and she does the vast majority of this work for us, and she does an outstanding job. And this request is not to say that she's not doing outstanding work. The request is to say that there's just so much work, and she needs the extra help to be able to make sure that this process flows.
Thank you for explaining that to us. Vice Chair Campbell.
If we could bring the slide back up. So the slide is titled "A Corrections Deputy Conversion," but the blue box has law enforcement deputy.
Typos.
Which one's typos?
Correct. It is a corrections deputies conversion.
Okay. Thank you.
My apologies.
I was flipping between both bureaus as well in the budget book to try to find the human.
That's absolutely a copy and paste error. My fault.
I was in the entirely wrong department to find the human. Thank you. And I think you explained it, but I was distracted trying to find the human. Same thing. The corrections deputy costs, HR specialist costs. You're using, an HR specialist probably costs less than a corrections deputy?
It appears not.
It appears not. Okay. And we're using that budget savings to pay for something else in the bureau? Overtime costs. Thank you.
Says right there on the slide, sorry. Remaining budget to overtime costs. Small, in the blue box.
Thank you very much.
I missed it as well.
I think we're ready to proceed.
All right. So next is regarding the ARPA funds in the next slide. So historically, we have used some ARPA funds to, for our hiring incentives, and also our referral bonuses. So the hiring incentives that we currently have, and this request is a continuation of that funding for that purpose. We've allowed entry level incentive at $10,000, and the way we structure the payments is that the payments are divided in half and given at different points in the person's longevity. So the first half, for example, of an entry level hire is they get $5,000 upon their second paycheck with us. And then the second $5,000 is after they've completed their entire training process, including the police academy and the FTO program, and then after they complete that, their second paycheck after that. So that can be a significant amount of time. It's, you know, the academy's five months, so you're looking at probably 10 months before they're completely released or longer. So 10, 11 months. So that's how that's broken out. It's similar for both the transfer and the laterals. So the lateral, $25,000 divided in half, first half, second paycheck, second half when they're released to patrol. So they're off FTO. Most laterals don't have to go to, in-state laterals don't have to go to the police academy. Out-of-state laterals have to go to a short equivalency academy. And then through the field training process, which is usually accelerated because they're experienced police officers, have a lot of knowledge on police tactics and so forth and law. So then they're released significantly earlier, but their second half is upon their release into patrol as well. One of the benefits of having lateral candidates and why they get a significantly larger bonus is they come with a great deal of experience usually, and then that time to get them on the street is significantly less. We're looking at 11 months for a new hire candidate versus four months with a lateral candidate. So we see the impact of that significantly sooner. So that's why there's a little bit more. And then the transfer is for corrections deputies or law enforcement deputies switching bureaus. So if a corrections deputy transfers from the jail out into patrol, there's a $12,000 also broken into those two phases. Generally, the corrections deputies have to go to the state academy for law enforcement, so it's closer to the entry level. We pay that bonus because most of the time, people that are in the jail, for example, that are interested in going into law enforcement are either going to go into law enforcement here or they're going to go somewhere else. And we'd rather have them stay within our department rather than leaving corrections with us and going and working in King County or Snohomish County or Lacey PD or wherever they choose. So the benefit is that they stay with our agency. The background process is faster because they're already with our agency. They've already gone through a background check, so it's kind of a refresh of the background check, and then out they come.
Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you. Since this is ARPA funds, and this is the only ARPA request, correct? And that they're time limited and that which we allocate but don't spend, we have to return. What is your certainty of expenditure on the full request you have here?
I have no certainty at all. So it just depends on the hires that we can accomplish in the timeframe. You'll see on the next slide or a slide coming up, kind of our trend in hiring, and, you know, these are our best guess, so we've identified what we think we're going to be able to do. But I can't give a guarantee.
And where we may be challenged here is if we set the money, because it's ARPA, if we set the money aside and you don't spend it, it goes back to the federal government, doesn't get rolled over. So there might be a little timeframe with some rollover, but, so we need to make sure in requests like this that we are drilled in perfectly, because we don't want to send back money. The other question would be, when ARPA runs out, do you plan to discontinue this program? What's your plan for the program post-ARPA?
So we'd have to reevaluate it at that time. So, you know, I can't really say. I'd hate to discontinue it. There's, it's a big incentive for people. They look at financials when they come to agencies. I tell all the new candidates, we don't pay the highest in the state, and we've started a program to help get more people in where when we have a candidate referred to our background unit, one of the chiefs on our department calls every single candidate on the phone as soon as they're referred and talks to them, asks if they have any questions. I was calling a few yesterday. I spent 20 minutes on a call with a candidate yesterday. And so we're doing everything we can to have these people come to our department. If we lose this, and we're not even the highest benefit in the state, there's other agencies that pay more than us, I think it'll have a detrimental effect on our recruiting efforts. Although I tell every candidate that I talk to, if you're in this job to get rich, you're in the wrong job because you're not going to get rich wearing a name tag, and we have to wear a name tag. So you'll make a good wage, you'll live comfortably, and it's great work, but it shouldn't all be about the money.
We don't need to decide it this morning, but there are some risks with allocating this much from a fiscal perspective, and then for longevity planning is ARPA our best path on this for a couple of reasons. Thank you, Chair.
And I apologize, I don't know all the ins and outs about money has to be returned or.
It's all good. I'm going to actually call up Dr. Robinson to finish the conversation on this. Dr. Robinson, we have until the end of 2024 to put the dollars under contract and at the end of 2026 to fully expend ARPA dollars. With the rate of spending for these incentives for hiring and retention, how confident do you feel as you've looked at the spending rate and the plan that we're going to be able to fully invest these dollars for this purpose by the end of 2026?
Gary Robinson with the Finance Department. We track all the ARPA expenditures as we have in the prior year, and this would be an area that we'd be tracking should you approve this allocation. If it appears as though that we're not going to be able to expend the funds under the guidance that we're receiving from the U.S. Treasury, we would want to work with you and the executive in looking at a reallocation. We concur that this is a very successful program for the sheriff's department and don't want to preclude the opportunity for the program to continue into the next biennial, but we'll be tracking it and wanting to work with you and the executive to look at any reallocation that may need to be necessary, not only for this ARPA allocation, but others that you're considering in this biennial budget.
Do you have concerns with the spending rate? Are there concerns? Is it, I don't, we have complete agreement that it's a great incentive and a needed incentive. The amount of money, I think, is what we're talking about. Are we putting too much here that we're not going to be able to spend in time?
I do not have a concern with a proposal that is before you, and that's based upon the input from the sheriff's department to ensure that we have this capacity should they need to draw up on it.
Thank you for that helpful information.
Okay. So the next section of that slide is the referral bonus program. So there's a program in place where any county employee, threw a little, found that the other day, a little refer and earn picture up there, where any county employee can refer a person to the sheriff's department for hire, and if that person's actually hired, can receive a $5,000 referral bonus. So that's part of this funding as well. We've found success with it. We've had several deputies refer more than one candidate, and that got hired. But this is open to any county employee with a little caveat, like I'm not eligible, the sheriff's not eligible, anybody in the background unit's not eligible. So people that can influence the hiring are not eligible to receive the bonus. But if somebody in public works makes a referral and that person gets hired, and the person gets hired puts that person's name on our sheet that says this is the person that referred me, that employee would get a $5,000 bonus. So we've found success with that as well. And then the number of applicants there is listed on the slide as well that we anticipate each year to receive the various bonuses. And then one other little program that's not part of the budget request, but we just wanted to throw it in there just for transparency's sake and your information, is that we, the county has a relocation assistance program so that if somebody lives more than 75 miles away and they have to relocate to take the job, that there's funds provided up to $7,000 to help reimburse them for their moving expenses, and we would cover that out of our existing budget, maybe salary savings or something like that to help cover those. We have yet to have anybody utilize that, but it's an option there for people, especially like out-of-state candidates, can be very helpful for them. All right. Next slide. Council staff, I can't remember what day, but asked us to provide a hiring and recruiting update, so we thought we'd just jump right into that since I'm standing here. So as always, we continually review our hiring standards to keep in line with other agencies, to make sure we're finding that most qualified candidates that meet our core values and our high ethical standards. So we don't want to, as the sheriff says, we're not trying to lower the bar. We want to make sure that we get very qualified candidates. You lower the bar, you run into problems later. So we're not lowering our standards. The next slide is the one I kind of alluded to earlier, and that's with our candidates' process. So we switched to that new testing system, public safety testing, and you can see how our candidates processed have escalated significantly. And what that means is, like we were mentioning earlier, with civil service, having to process all of those candidates, because all these candidates went through that civil service process and got referred to us by civil service, not counting the ones that were excluded because they didn't pass the test. These are just the people that made it through the civil service process to us. So significant increase. And that's year-to-date, so I believe both bureaus, I think we have about 200 candidates that we're working right now that aren't included in that 545. So that's going to be, that graph is even going to go higher. Same with corrections. I think it's about the same number of candidates in corrections that are still being worked, it's about 200. So those will hopefully all get worked this year. We're anticipating for the law enforcement bureau, we're going to have, not this next Monday, but the following Monday, we're hiring four law enforcement deputies, and tomorrow we're doing what we call a candidate assessment meeting to review the candidates, and we anticipate hiring, we're giving conditional offers to five candidates tomorrow, so one of which is a lateral.
Great work.
Next slide, please. This is just a review of the hires and separations and vacancies for the, this slide for the law enforcement bureaus. Vacancies currently at 36, hires as of today at 20, not counting the four that we're going to hire two Mondays from now and the five we anticipate, so that'll go up. And then the separations are at 16. So you'll notice that the separations so far this year are lower than all the prior years back to 18. However, we routinely see separations closer to the end of the year, so that number's likely to go up. And then the next slide. And this is the exact same slide but for corrections. Corrections vacancies at 58, hires at 29. You'll notice so far this year, that's the highest number of hires that we've ever seen for corrections going back to 2018, and we anticipate significantly more hires this year for corrections as well. So we'll see an increase. Separations are kind of flat right now. You'll see going back in time there. So 2018, we had 24 separations, and just like law enforcement, we're likely to see some separations, more separations before the end of the year. And then the next slide. Recruiting efforts, we have a full-time recruiter. That is a patrol position, so it's not a funded position within the Administrative Services Bureau. It's a funded position, where the money and the position comes from patrol bureau. We think it's important enough to have a full-time recruiter that we forego a patrol deputy to make that happen. Seen enormous success with that. Current recruiter, a full-time recruiter is Holly Clark. She's a former military, has a lot of connections with the military community. She's great. We send her lots of places, and she does lots of great work. We recently added a recruiting cadre, a 12-time, part-time recruiters. They help Holly with recruiting events. They'll go to events themselves that Holly can't go to because there's just so many. So we try to get everywhere we can. Actually, today, I think we're over at WSU for a couple of days. So we're over there right now recruiting. They keep a calendar update, they know where they're going. It's great. So they're doing great things. Next slide, please. So this is a slide of the people that we've hired so far this year. Some of our other recruiting efforts and things that we're doing to recruit these people are, as I think you're all aware, we have a significant presence on social media, which allows us to, sorry, I lost my notes. So I'm going to have to wing it because I can't find it. So we have a large presence on social media, including Facebook, we're on Twitter, I think they're on Snapchat, I don't know all these things.
Sergeant Moss is very busy.
He is very busy. Yesterday, he was walking around with somebody dressing in a unicorn suit. I don't know what that's going on downstairs. I don't know. So we have a large presence on there, a lot of recruiting events that we're going to. We've been to Fort Hood. We went to Fort Leavenworth, Camp Hamilton down in California. They're going to go somewhere this next year out of state, a lot of diverse members in the military community, so we like going out there. We're out to Fort Lewis all the time. We have something on a schedule coming up out at Bangor at the submarine base. Go out to the shipyard there at Bremerton. All the universities, we have events, I think, this month at TCC Gig Harbor, TCC Tacoma. I think we have a University of Washington event this year before the end of the year. So we're getting everywhere, and we're doing everything we can possibly think of. We're out at Touch a Truck. We were at the fair again this year. At Middle Right Side, that gentleman right there was recruited at the fair, yours truly, was out at the recruiting booth, sucked him in. He worked for a cable company or something. He said, I remember, he said, he said, "Don't you think I'm too old?" I said, "How old do you think I am?" So he came onboard, some great candidates up there. So it's a wonderful opportunity for these people and for us as well. So our recruiting efforts, just, the team just continues to knock it out of the park. I just can't be more impressed. So as we move to the next slides, there's some continuing recruiting efforts. We mentioned how we We mentioned how we switched to public safety testing, gives us more visibility, we're out there more, increase our candidate pool. It costs more, but we've seen the benefits. You saw the benefits on that slide, so it is a little bit more expensive, but we think it was worth it as our numbers need to increase. So we need to get those candidates in. We're paying for the testing fees on there. So if a candidate has an economic barrier and they just can't afford to pay it, even if they don't, we pay the testing fees. We pay for every single testing fee, whether they select our agency first where it's more expensive, or they select our agency second where it's less expensive, we're paying those testing fees. So we just think it's the right thing to do. It helps out the candidate and ensures that we get more candidates that we can check in on. We talked about some of the video series that, sorry, Moss is doing, but some of the ones that we like the best are the why. It's videos of our deputies just telling us why they joined the Sheriff's Department, why they like it here. The ride-along videos have been very successful, we get a lot of comments. Every person on that slide, myself and Chief Roberts, we both meet independently and have little training sessions with every single new hire class. In my last class, I always ask them, "What drew you to us? What drew you to us?" And every one of them said, "A part of it was our social media campaign and how transparent we are and how much information we put out." So every single person, I'm not exaggerating, said that that was a part of it. So it's great. We have all those campaigns. We do paid advertisement on Facebook. We've done radio ads, television ads. You know, I think everybody knows we have the bias Facebook following in the state, so we get a lot of attention. We're always putting out recruiting stuff on there. And as I mentioned earlier, we have found that just our social media and just what we put out in itself is a recruiting campaign. I talked to a candidate, not last night, day before, said that he was able to watch those videos and learn so much about the Sheriff's Department, and I think she said she's very interested in our dive team. So we had a specific video on our YouTube channel about our dive team, and so she was able to watch that video and learn about it. So she's pretty excited. I think she said she applied with us and, like, Fish and Wildlife are the only two departments she applied for, she expects to get hired with us. So, you know, the body cameras have been a tool in multiple ways. So it's a very successful program. I know, all of you know that I've been a strong supporter of our body-worn camera program, and it's just worked out great for us. So as we move to the next slide, it's just the photo of those, oh, I'm sorry, it's the, kind of goes into our hiring incentives, and I won't belabor it because I've already spoke to it, but for laterals, I just wanted to cover one more time kind of those benefits there that we've also included additional benefits, which have also been very successful in getting candidates. Lateral candidates, when they leave an agency, then they come to a new agency, they come with no sick leave, no vacation, right? So we've instituted a program, didn't cost any dollars to institute a program, where we'll give you 80-hour sick leave bank and an 80-hour vacation bank, right? So then, so they're not coming in the hole, which has been very successful. So, all right. Any other questions?
Chief Hausner, before you leave the hiring strategy, can you update us briefly? There was a strategy the department put in place recently, I believe, to station one of our deputies at the academy
Yes.
to fast-track the academy process and the onboarding process.
Yes.
How is that going?
Very successful. So the academy is very pleased with the staff member that we put up there, and we have guaranteed seats at the academy classes, so we have more opportunity to put people in the training classes. We also are in the process of entering an agreement to add another staff member up there for defensive tactics training, which will give us greater consideration for filling those seats, so.
And that's going to continue to be
Yes.
invested in the next biennial?
Yes.
Great.
Yes, that's our intent.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the next slide. Just finishing up, one last look at our new hires.
Very proud, for good reason.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for the innovation. Thank you for the commitment to rethinking how we do hiring and onboarding. It's paying off.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'll introduce Patty Jackson. She's up next, Mayor of Jacksonville.
Uh-oh. Do I need to reduce the heat? See why I asked you to come join my team? Right there.
You can't have them, chief.
Oh, did I say, I didn't know my mic was on. I apologize. Good morning, I'm Patty Jackson. I am the bureau chief for the Corrections Bureau for the Pierce County Sheriff's Department, and I stand before you again very proud of the job that the men and women that I work for do. And so I'm hopeful to come up and talk a little bit about our needs and our wants, and hopefully answer any questions that you may have of what kind of things that we're doing. And so I'm going to jump right in and start piggybacking right off of slide number 20 that Chief Hausner spoke about. This goes hand-in-hand for our Corrections Bureau. The need that has been increased due to litigation, due to requests for records, things along those lines that the individuals that are entrusted to our care still have, it is, it puts a huge strain on the workload of individuals that we have working for the Corrections Bureau. It is such a bifurcated system right now where we might have an individual who is on light duty trying to pull records together, which would be a commissioned deputy that doesn't have that specific training in the office assistant world, or people that we have to add to their already overburdened workload to get things done. This position, we believe, by converting .9 of a Corrections Deputy post to a full Office Assistant III, we feel that that would help us for very many reasons. So number one, it would help us establish procedures that handle both active and inactive records, right? And that is the storage, the various places that we have those. It would be one person, it would be that point of contact that would be able to handle all those requests in a timely manner, like Sheriff Troyer pointed out, on the front end versus coming back and having to pay for things on the back end because we weren't able to do that in a timely manner. It ensures prompt and sufficient organized responses, so we'll be able to get somebody that's more specialized in that type of work, that office assistant work, be able to help us come up with a system that is not bifurcated, and we don't have to have 18 different people doing it. And then they would also just prepare the required responses due to increased subpoenas for the jail records and litigation, working hand-in-hand with the LA4 position that Chief Hausner talked about already. So that is what I have on that slide. We have a problem right now with, you know, the amount of work that we're doing that we're trying to have Corrections Deputies do without having to pull them from the important work that they're doing with watching the individuals entrusted in our care. Next slide, please. Whoever's doing that. Thank you. Office Assistant II. This also, I think that it's Under Sheriff Baumkamp that I continually hear from him that says, you know, "When we can least afford something is when we need it the most." We are talking about reductions in those vacant Corrections positions that we do have, right? I am standing before you. I'm telling you, as a 34-year, right, experienced veteran in this job, we are sorely understaffed to do the work that we do. We are the only Corrections Bureau in Washington State where we have numbers of 84 inmates to one deputy. Our deputies are that good, right? They have come up with ways, and they work with us and the administration team, that we ensure that we're able to safeguard them as well as the individuals that are entrusted in our care that are living in the, you know, temporarily, excuse me, living in our facility. And so they are, you know, very stretched, and so along with that, the work that adds to that, we also have two, we only have, in the organization, and you saw on the first pie graph, right, how large our bureau is, we only have two dedicated office assistants that help us maintain all of that work that's behind the scenes. We need more. They're stretched thin, and so we believe that adding one more Office Assistant II will help us to better bridge the needs that we have with that behind-the-scenes work and allow us to have our Corrections Deputy doing the work that they are hired to do and that they're trained to do. So they're going to help assist with policy manual revisions, and so that would be the clerical assistant. Our, the men and women that are experts, the subject matter experts, the Corrections Deputies, will still help build what those needs are in policies, but we would have somebody that would be able to support that. And so I really want to add, just jumping on what, thank you very much, what Chief Hausner was talking about with the recruiting efforts. We have hired in Corrections 29 Corrections Deputies this year, 29, and that is huge. That is something that we have not seen. 27 of those deputy positions have been hired since May 15th. Okay? When we talk about the training, we've got one individual who's our training deputy who takes care of all the incoming new hires as well as the individuals that are doing the in-service training that you talk about, that annual training that we need to do. He needs help in being able to update those training records and making sure that we're in compliance with everything, and this office assistant is going to be able to help us do just that. So I am incredibly proud of what we've done to be able to bring more people on. It is not an easy job to hire into. It is a very unique branch of law enforcement, and it's because of the support that I have from, you know, Sheriff Troyer and all of the peers that are on the command staff that we're able to do this. It is a fantastic place to work, and I'm hopeful that there is anybody on the public, right, that's looking at this, that they think, "This is the place I'd like to have my son, my daughter, maybe themselves, come work for us."
Chief Jackson.
I had something in my eye. It's a contact, it's rolling up. I apologize. So that said, I'm just very grateful, and so I'm hopeful that you'll take this request very seriously, so. All joking aside. Next slide, please, sir. And finally, we're looking at using vacancy savings to provide another avenue to maintain our ability to best safeguard the individuals that are entrusted to our care. We are looking at something, I know it looks like a cage because it's just something that's up there. We are looking at, going back to what has been successful, and it's a best practice in Corrections right now. When you have direct supervision, that means that you have an individual Corrections Deputy right out, right, in that living environment with the individuals that are held there. The idea behind that and the motivation behind that is so we can be proactive versus reactive, right? At night, while individuals are going to be racked back, locked down for the evenings, that is when we still have a deputy that's in there. That's when we go into what we call indirect. The current layout that we have at the jail does not really allow us to use that indirect setting. Providing these secure staff stations will allow us to do that, so the staff member will be able to be in that secure area and maintain the oversight of two units. And they will only go inside, so where you can see the individual in the brown uniform shirt there, that's kind of what the layout looks in the jail. It's a big, open campsite, if you will. That will allow, when we do go inside there, one of the escort deputies will be able to go in with them. So that will be able to provide us an opportunity to better and more efficiently staff our facility while not reducing the safety that is paramount in running a safe, secure, and very much, what's the word I'm looking for? Constitutional. Sorry, didn't mean to lose that. I lost my train of thought. Thank you. And so I believe the next slide is just reinforcing that this is a capital project for us, and so it just allows us to use only one Correction Deputy for two units, only when we're in a lockdown time or if there's no problematic events taking place.
And that shows up in the capital facilities plan? Where does this show up?
In the operating.
In the operating section?
Budget?
It's not big enough to be in the CFP?
Right. Yeah, so it's not a really large amount.
Okay. Yeah, the first item in your decision, in the decision package worksheet there. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Bokey just said he wants to work in Corrections also.
Chief.
I heard him say it. I heard him say it. It's a wonderful place to work.
You know, you don't get the, you're not eligible for the incentives, Chief Jackson.
I'm not eligible. You know, I'm quickly, because I had such a quick slide, I'll tell you that when I go to restaurants, what have you, I mean, I am constantly, I am picking people up in a good way, but I did, I saw, I saw a parent, I saw a parent the other day, right? Because I was at a restaurant, and there was a young person that was there, and I said, "Hey, do you happen to be 20 years of age?" And I saw the mother take the phone, I think she dialed 91. And I go, "No, no, 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 let me explain myself." So it is, it's something that is incredibly, I'm proud of the work that we do. And I just, I wanted, and I know you're going to maybe have a question, but when we were talking about the major, I really wanted to point out Steve Jones, who's back there. Not only did Steve do a fantastic job to fill in for me while I was gone as the Chief of Corrections, we started our career together 34 years ago, and we celebrate our anniversary on October 9th. I've grown up with that man, and he, I just thank you so much for approving that position because he has done a huge, huge thing in helping us get back where we need to be in that whole morale, you know, in the facility. So just kudos to Steve.
Thank you. Chief Jackson, speaking of the jail, in my early review of the capital facilities plan, there are requests for investments, capital investments at the jail, so we will review the capital facilities plan separately in committee, and just ask to make yourself available, I know you will, but make yourself available for that discussion and make sure our budget staff tees up the subject matter experts when we get to the capital facilities plan.
Absolutely, sir.
There's some important conversations to have about some new major investments there to tired old facility.
Yes, very much.
Well, we're going to restrict your access, so you don't get to walk around the 10th floor here to poach our good staff in the office of the county council, but thank you.
I have a good eye for things, sir.
We know you do. Chief Jackson, thank you for your presentation. Are there questions for Chief Jackson about what we've heard for the Corrections Bureau presentation? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. This is Chief Jackson's side. This is really important work, and the numbers that we're seeing are phenomenal, and I think the investment in changing the testing and making it more accessible department-wide is really paying off. I had a couple of kind of separate questions, so Chair, if I can, okay.
If it's Corrections, let's do it now.
It is Corrections-related. So one of the items in here talked about the commissary and how you have a deputy, like, is it a deputy that runs the commissary, or is it some other person that runs the commissary?
No, ma'am, we have a contract
Okay.
who provides service for the commissary. In the years past, I mean, since, I mean, in the long dinosaur times that I've been here, we did have a dedicated employee that was, that ran our commissary. That has since been turned over to a contract, but we do have an individual that has oversight of that contract
Okay.
and that, the food service, and just the, we provide labor, inmate labor volunteer, right? And so individuals who are incarcerated in our facility that want to, you know, do a little something more while they're waiting for their time, they can apply to be what we call an inmate worker. And so we have to have a commissioned deputy oversee that because we have to run classification on them, and they do a fantastic job making certain that the right people are, I guess, employed to do those jobs.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful, because I was looking at it and going, I don't, if they're behind the counter distributing and
No, ma'am.
I didn't think I needed a commissioned officer to do that. But I could have been wrong, right?
Right.
I learned something new.
Right.
My second question around the commissary again was, and this is Janie, or Councilmember Hitchens getting into the weeds, but it talked about over-the-counter medications.
Right.
Can you send, like, I guess, I don't even know what's sold out of the commissary, I don't know how it works. Can you send that to me or share?
I absolutely can.
Okay.
I can provide you with the whole commissary menu, if you will, but the over-the-counter are things like that we would buy, you know, Tylenol-type thing, you know, something, it's a product like that, or maybe I have, you know, I need a little muscle, you know, cream or something, you know, I've got aches and pains.
Okay.
Something that is not indicative that they would need to go to the clinic and be provided medical services.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And I have a couple others, I might just email you.
Okay. I'd be happy to take them.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Bridges will continue to collect all of our public safety-related questions and make sure they get to the right bureau or the right department and we get timely response. Chief Jackson, while we do have you, there, you didn't speak to increased food service contract costs of 2.27 million, increased inmate medical services and pharmaceutical costs, 3.9 million. I believe we've seen requests for vacancy savings applied to these increased costs. A few words on this, please. Our understanding is these are just the real cost of doing business, increasing costs of these contracted services. We have to feed
That is correct.
We have to provide this care, but by funding these cost increases, we're sort of resetting what the cost is, and we should have less what the cost is, and we'll, we should have less unanticipated increased costs in the future. You can't tell the future, but this is just, this is the cost of doing this work.
This is the cost of doing business, right? And so just as we, you know, have seen increase in food costs, for example, you know, across the nation, and when we go, you know, I'm sure that most of our food budgets have been stretched a little bit because of the raising cost, it is the same that's happening for food services in Corrections. Less and less companies are able to provide the service at the scope that the contractors are able to do, to, you know, ensure that the individuals are fed, you know, three meals a day and in compliance with caloric needs and things along those lines. And so that cost has, you know, risen. You also will find, just like in any other job, especially when, you know, the pandemic had a huge effect on people that were willing to work, and the type of individuals that might apply to come work in a jail, right? They might be able to make a higher wage somewhere else, so wages had to be reflected to get better people that are hired in to be able to do jobs like contract food service in a jail without us worrying, you know, at every turn, are they bringing contraband in, are drugs getting into our facility? And so we have to still screen individuals that are coming in there. So the food costs, I can't, right, predict what those are going to do, but I will tell you that the contractor that we have right now, we have a very good working relationship and a very good partnership with, and they are upfront with us, you know, for the true needs. And so we do, as soon as we get that, we speak to that quickly, and if we need to have adjustments, that's when we come forward. As far as the medical and the pharmaceutical, I can tell you that the individuals that are coming into facilities today are an aging, right, population. And by that, I mean that individuals that are 20 years of age are coming to us looking like they're 60. They are running hard and fast out on the streets, they are coming to us with medical problems and mental health challenges that we've never seen the numbers of, and it's only growing. And so it is something that we must do mandated to be able to provide them with medical care while they're with us, and a lot of times, that includes medication.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you. Again, thank you for all your work with this. This may be for Mr. Bokey, just to help me, trying to read the decision package here a little bit. It can be clear to me when something was requested and is in the executive's budget or is not in, but we get some of them that are just dashes all the way across. And maybe you covered this yesterday and I wasn't here, but the, what's happening in those situations in the decision?
Yeah, we could go through each one, Councilmember Campbell, but in most cases, and I'll actually call attention, and Mr. Robinson, Ms. Demuth can jump in also. So on the second page, or you may have it on a different page, but projected one-time severance costs for 24, 25, of $308,710 funded by anticipated vacancy savings. So they're, they're not giving the department any additional funding, they're assuming a certain level of vacancy savings there. And then the next one is the same. Increased overtime costs, 5,129, 380 due to labor agreements and vacancies funded by anticipated vacancy savings. And then, so those are items that you're, there's an assumption there that there'll still be fairly healthy vacancy savings, which of course we've had, and it's been alluded to, that we've had to use vacancy savings to pay for increased costs several times for food and, and medical costs. Those are being, this time, the increased food contract costs, increased inmate medical service, services and pharmaceutical costs, as well as the increased overtime costs due to labor agreements and vacancies. The last item, $8 million, are being loaded in to the budget. So, because they're so large, you couldn't assume vacancy savings for those. So that's why you're seeing the, a fairly large increase, even though you're seeing less, less FTEs being funded, you're seeing almost a 15% increase in their, in their biennial budget.
So, this, that, projected use of vacancy savings, and this, this is kind of a new budget trick for us. We haven't pre-spent vacancy savings before, have we?
Not that I know of, but I'll let finance speak to that.
We can, and, yeah, let's.
I think they can give you a better detail of what's going on here.
Good morning, Julie Demuth with the Finance Department. So this is a new mechanism that we've used to resolve our budget issues in the next biennium. So for both law enforcement as well as Corrections, for items that we are hoping are one-time costs associated either with severance or increased overtime due to the high number of vacancies we currently have, we are funding those with projected vacancy savings. So we have reduced salaries and benefits, the normal budget for that, and reallocated it to specifically severance and overtime. In the areas that Mr. Bokey was mentioning, we have increased the base budget for certain items. Part of that is overtime, so some of the overtime we're experiencing is ongoing operating costs. So we have increased the base budget in those instances, as well as for medical, pharmaceutical, jail food services. So where we've identified increased costs that we are hoping are one-time, we have looked at using vacancy savings for those and have programmed that into the budget.
And it's only in Sheriff's Department and Corrections that we've pre-spent vacancy savings, we've not done that anywhere else in the budget book. And I know that this has actually been some contention before. Sheriff's been saying, "Hey, it's my vacancy savings, why can't I spend my vacancy savings?" So I see this as kind of a step in that direction. I'm going to wrap my head around that a little bit more, but it is a departure from how we've done it in the past, and it also really tightens the budget up, because there's, we've always been able to count on a certain amount of vacancy savings, so that as things kind of fall through, the vacancy savings kind of level everything out, so if we have to adjust and move up and down. So when we hear about over-hiring, without coming back to counsel, there's not the vacancy savings. And so if they have to come back, we'll have to make cuts somewhere else at that time, or find other revenue or cuts at that time, because there won't be the vacancy savings pool to pull from. So I just want to make sure, if I'm reading the numbers flowing through correctly, what our risks here are, is that it's going to be tighter, there will likely be an ask coming back, and we likely haven't identified the cuts and/or new funding mechanism for that ask.
Correct, and so.
Lots of likelies in there.
Yes.
So, nothing's, nothing's certain, but many of the safety nets we had before were now approaching.
Yes, and while we certainly hope we can fill our vacant position, the likelihood of being able to fill 100% of these is probably lower for the next biennium, and so likely it'll be an issue that we're addressing in '26, '27.
Okay. That's all for right now, Chair. Thank you.
And I'll just jump in, and I would point out that these increased costs, especially for medical and food, are happening at a time when the average daily population in the jail is lower than it's been in decades. So, so if there's any chance, and I don't know that this is in the next biennium, that the number starts to head up towards 1,000 again, it really depends a lot on the mix, because if there's more misdemeanors in the jail, we don't pay for them, we actually receive money for them if they're outside of the unincorporated areas of the county. But if that number goes up with more felons, then it's, it could get real, it could even be more difficult. The medical costs are, you saw that recent request, you approved the recent request for use of vacancy savings this year for the medical cost increases, but they, they really have gone up. We are providing more service. We essentially now have a full-time dentist in the jail now. So this is, it's out there, it's something we're going to have to monitor going forward, and I just want you to be aware that this is all happening at a time when there's historical low numbers of people in the jail.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. And Ms. Demuth, you might know this, but who is our medical provider? Like, who do we contract with?
Navcare.
Navcare? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there questions about Corrections? Anything, I'm going to take a recess for 10 minutes after we complete the discussion with the Corrections Bureau. Any other questions at all about Corrections? We can certainly come back at the very end of this, at the end of our morning together with the Sheriff's Department, but any other questions before we take a 10-minute recess on Corrections? Certainly, one of the other benefits of ramping up our hiring efforts and having folks work a manageable schedule and have a manageable staff is we reduce our burden on overtime. And so there's all kinds of motivations, many, many motivations to staffing up. It's, it'll save us money in the long term if we can staff up, we'll pay less money in overtime. Chief Jackson, thank you for being with us. There very well may be questions at the very end of our time together this morning, but thank you. I'm going to ask us to take a 10-minute recess and to come back at 11:25 to continue the discussion with the Sheriff's Department. We're at recess until 11:25. Well, thank you, everyone. The council is back from its morning recess, the time is 11:26 a.m. We're still with the Sheriff's Department, and I'm actually going to call back up the Corrections Bureau chief to conclude a conversation this morning with council. Chief Jackson, something we didn't get a chance to explore before we broke for a recess was about what we call, what the shorthand that we call in government these days, the true blood obligations. These are folks who are in your custody, who have significant mental illness, where the state is struggling to do any sort of mental health evaluation of them in a timely way. If, if needed, transfer them to another facility outside of your custody, to a more appropriate setting, that's not the county jail, but a place that's more appropriate for their custody, and perhaps their rehabilitation, like Western State Hospital or another appropriate facility. We have significant costs, as I continue to understand it, about these individuals that are in your care. It's a really serious human issue and fiscal issue for the county. What can you share with us about where we are at with this really significant issue about folks who have significant mental illness who are in the county jail?
Yes, sir. As you know, we've spoken in the past, and I've spoken with many of the council members, that we do have a significant percentage of our individuals that are incarcerated in Pierce County right now, who suffer from a diagnosed mental health, or at least a co-occurring challenging disorder with drug addiction. And of that percentage, there are a significant number of individuals who are needing additional help through the, right, the actual appropriate, through DSHS, to receive the appropriate care that they should be receiving. Those individuals oftentimes are kept, held in our custody until such time that a bed becomes open, whether that be in one of the alternate sites for restoration, or Western State for evaluation and/or restoration. And so while they're awaiting beds to be able to get that care that they have already been deemed necessary, that they should at the very least be evaluated for, they are kept in our custody. And I believe that there's, the number has been discussed amongst those of ours that are here from budget and also from, also Gary Robinson and team, Julie, that we're thinking that there was somewhere in the neighborhood of about 1.8, you know, million, we're not really 100% certain on that, so what we want to do is be able to check those numbers out and get back to you on that.
Thank you. Thank you for being proactive. The question, of course, in follow-up was going to be, do we have a sense of what the fiscal impact is of these individuals that are, we're paying for, it's in our custody, but really we're, it's not appropriate to be in our custody, they should be someone else's responsibility. And thank you for the, thank you for the follow-up to come on that.
Yes, sir.
Are there questions for Chief Jackson before we get off the Corrections Bureau and move to the Investigations Bureau? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the question, it triggered another question for me, about medically assisted opioid abatement, like opioid treatment or substance use disorder, is that funded in the current budget? Does that happen through Navcare, or are we doing any of that work?
Right, so we have partnerships with other agencies that are outside that get dollars and grants to be able to provide substance use disorder and also medicated, right, assistance as well. And so we are still partnered with, like, Pierce County Alliance and a few other contracting agencies that can provide that type of medication while they're incarcerated with us. Couple of problems exist, right, that are challenging. People believe that jail is the best place, you have a captive audience, if you will. You still can't force people to get into those programs. Additionally, if individuals are going to be going to other facilities that don't have those programs, sometimes it is deemed more medically harmful if we treat them and then they have to withdraw from something and go to another process. So we make certain that our medical director and team, the Navcare contract that you're talking about, they evaluate individuals on a case-by-case basis, and we still are absolutely highly engaged in providing those services.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to also, just referring back when we're talking about sending people outside to other, you know, areas for mental health care, it is very important to also just remind everybody that we do have a mental health team that actually are dedicated to working in the jail, and they do a phenomenal job of making sure that they're screening the individuals for those people that might not have the higher level of need that you're speaking of, Chairman, and going to Western State, but they still might need some help, and so we do provide that while they're incarcerated in our facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Jackson? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate you.
Appreciate the follow-up.
Call Chief Robertson.
Chief Roberts, good morning.
Good morning, Chair and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity. Before I kind of get into investigative bureau budgetary requests for this biennium budget, I wanted to kind of piggyback on what Chief Jackson mentioned on, you know, thanking the staff and members, sorry, I should have talked louder, we were out of sync there for a second. Thanking all the members of our department for the incredible work that they do. As you're well aware, our corrections staff is working with significant staffing challenges and unique challenges, especially the last couple of years, and that's not lost on the investigative bureau. You know, our staffing challenges within investigations and forensics, our staffing challenges with patrol, with law enforcement in and of itself is a challenging profession on the best day. When you look at events and challenges and the uniqueness of the last several years, that's put immense pressure and challenges, and as a leadership team, we are incredibly proud of all the men and women, including our professional and support staff, that keep this department running on a day-to-day basis, and how they conduct themselves with character and integrity and the professionalism on a daily basis. So we want to take the opportunity to recognize publicly the work that they do.
Thank you for doing that.
So as we kind of transition into talking about the deputy conversion for the regional intelligence analyst, typically, as you know, I really like to have a conversation during this particular position, I'll probably refer to my notes more than I typically like to or you're accustomed to, but I think it's critically important that we take this time to kind of talk about the key components of why this is our number-one budgetary request for this biennium budget. When it comes to the intel analyst or the intelligence analyst position, some history on what does an intelligence analyst do and what do they provide for the Sheriff's Department and law enforcement? They serve a critical need for our department and the county as a whole. This position is the hub for receiving, analyzing, organizing, and the dissemination of intelligence, not just to the Sheriff's Department, but they also, other facets of county government and departments throughout the region. So not just the Sheriff's Department, all local law enforcement utilizes this intelligent information and makes decisions based on that. The essential responsibility of this position is to conduct intelligence-based investigations, analyze threats, and act as a liaison between local, state, and federal partners. Those federal partners include partners. Those federal partners include Fusion Centers, the FBI's Joint Terrorism Task Force, as well as many others. This collection, analysis, and vetting of information on a daily basis, and that dissemination of criminal intelligence information in cooperation with our partners—which, again, include numerous federal, state, and local partners—is what we've been accustomed to receiving in the Sheriff's Department for years. A brief history on the Regional Intelligence Group, or the RIG, as you may have heard it, is where this intel analyst position comes from. The RIG, the history began shortly after 9/11 with the terrorism attacks in New York City and the events that transpired from there. Initially, the RIG had two intel analysts, as well as numerous detectives and officers that were partnering with federal agencies on a larger scale. Over the years, that has dwindled to, right now, within the intel group, we provide a detective sergeant who is liaison with the federal partners and supervises the intel analyst, and we now have one intel analyst. Since 2014, after federal funding started to decrease, the funding for this position was funded through grants through Department of Emergency Management. However, in August 30—on August 31st of this year, that grant funding went away. Council was very supportive and given us budgetary authority to keep this position through the remainder of the year, so we're still able to have the ability to keep the intelligence flowing, not only for this department but in the region, until we can have a chance to present this budgetary request to you. The essential information is utilized, again, by the Sheriff's Department and other regional law enforcement agencies and law enforcement executives to make critical, timely, and informed operational decisions on a regular basis. This information ensures that we have real-time information to ensure to the best of our ability the safety and security of our communities, facilities, and infrastructure to keep our citizens and our employees safe. The intel analyst has been involved and critical in numerous events over the years. One of the largest events that we've had in Pierce County was the 2015 U.S. Open. It brought people from around the world. They were a key component, not only in their intelligence gathering and ensuring that we had a safe event, but their partnership with analysts and relationships with partners throughout the nation. They annually analyze threats for larger events like the Pialp Fair that we just had. We would routinely get information and intelligence on potential threats that could jeopardize the safety of the fair and the citizens that are attending that. They also assist in UP duct days, the Pierce County Fair, National Night Out, things along those lines that we're all too familiar with. They also utilize open-source media to monitor certain organized criminal activity. One that has plagued this region, including Pierce County, is the organized criminal activity surrounding street racing and illegal takeovers, and the lawlessness and danger and risks that that provides to the citizens of the county. They do a good job of helping us stay ahead of that and attacking that using open-source media to keep us and other law enforcement agencies apprised of what could be coming that, without this position, we would likely lose. They track and monitor threats and trends throughout the nation, similar to and events like active shooters, school shooting threats, extremist organizations. The intel analyst and supervisor are also present anytime there's an activation in the Emergency Operations Center through DEM. They are there for all activities and provide intelligence for major events within Pierce County, major disasters. They're a key component in planning of law enforcement services and other disturbances that may occur throughout the county or larger events. Nationally and other unique threats that come in due to us having several military installations, as well as the port of Tacoma within Pierce County, they work closely with analysts within the federal government, as well as the port, to ensure that we have continuity of information flowing. The largest, most recent event that they were involved in is—everyone is aware of the infrastructure attacks to the power stations that occurred in December of last year. This intel analyst and that team played a key role in the successful and quick apprehension and successful prosecution of people who were attacking the infrastructure within Pierce County. This intel analyst will be housed out of the South Hill Precinct, and they'll continue their partnership and connections throughout the area, so this intel analyst will remain an asset for all law enforcement and governmental agencies throughout Pierce County. We intend to maintain all of those partnerships. If we are not successful in funding this critical asset, Pierce County runs the risk, and it will lose the Pierce County-focused intelligence that we've grown accustomed to throughout county government. This position would then be dissolved, and we would rely solely on the Fusion Center, which is out of Seattle. The Fusion Center traditionally has been very King County and Seattle-specific. Information flows in. It doesn't typically flow outside to surrounding counties as well as it does within Seattle, and that's a concern if we lose that. That's why this is our top priority ask for the intel analysts and keeping them in Pierce County. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this position.
Thank you. And we see the FTE reflected on Section 7 of the Budget Book, page 27, Intelligent Analyst. We see the one FTE added in 2024 and 2025. Questions about this? Congressman Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. It is a very valuable asset. Coming from an agency that didn't have an analyst and then working with a federal agency that had one, I could not believe how they connected the dots on things and made investigations much quicker and came up with—just like you had with the power stations, I'm sure they found out it wasn't thus a terrorist attack or anything like that. I mean, they can—they're so valuable in getting your job done. I mean, a lot of people at our federal agencies, like the FBI, they have tons of analysts, curb investigators and things like that. It's just a tool that you absolutely—I definitely understand the need for this, so I was just making a comment on that.
Thank you. Thank you for those asks.
And just to reiterate your point, it's important to note that our intel analyst is tied in with several of those federal analysts, not just locally in the Tacoma-Seattle region, but analysts throughout the region. There's investigations where he's partnered with analysts in Fusion Centers in New York to help with local investigations and consolidating that critical information in a timely manner.
Thank you. Please proceed, Chief.
Thank you. Next slide, please. The next budgetary ask is converting a civilian forensics manager into a detective sergeant, FTE. As you've heard today, recruitment for law enforcement is a challenge, not just for our commission staff, but it's proving to be a challenge for professional staff as well. We face significant challenges attracting the qualified applicants. This position has been vacant since July of last year. We've made several attempts to recruit from around the country without success. We've not had success even internally with applicants. We've determined that the best path forward for the department and the community is a conversion from a civilian position into a commission position, and we're seeing this kind of trend without—or within law enforcement in the region. Some of the benefits is the detective sergeant's going to have extensive experience in criminal investigations, crime-scene management, documentation, evidence identification and collection, and experience with the state crime lab. They'll be proficient in report-writing, case preparation, as well as court testimony. All this is ultimately going to lead to stronger investigations and stronger cases—or stronger prosecutions and increase our likelihood of successful prosecutions. This will also help us create a more cohesive relationship between forensics and detectives, as well as the rest of the department. One of the unique benefits is the detective sergeant will also have the ability to directly supervise commission staff. With a civilian employee, we don't have that opportunity. How that will benefit the Sheriff's Department is several-fold. We have a computer and phone forensics. Our digital forensics unit is commission staff. Traditionally, all of our crime scene investigation and forensics have been separated and managed by two. We'll be able to move those two under one supervisor, which will give us a continuity of operation and the ability to have all of our forensics evidence under one unit and increase the likelihood of making sure we're not missing evidence in cases and better communication. The detective sergeant will also be a force multiplier for our department. They will have the ability, with their experience with investigations and crime scene processing, to be a force multiplier to where they'll be able to work closer with our detectives and run major crime scenes as a scene lead, freeing up our already-stretched personnel to focus on other aspects of our major investigations, like homicide or other larger crime scenes. This will also allow this detective sergeant to also be a member of the Pierce County Force Investigation Team, which is Pierce County's independent investigation team for incidents of deadly or serious injury investigations involving law enforcement agencies. Our department is a large contributor to this regional team, and this will be another force multiplier where they can do the same thing, run scene leads and manage our forensics teams, obviously in incidences that Pierce County Sheriff's Department is not involved in. With the ability to better manage and be a force multiplier is why we feel transitioning from a civilian manager into a detective sergeant is the best path forward, not only just for our forensics team, but also for the department as a whole. Any questions?
Questions about this request in the decision package?
I'm sorry, I didn't—
I said—I asked my colleagues if there's any other questions about this request in the decision pa—sorry for mumbling.
That's all right.
Looks like you explained it well, Chief Roberts.
Thank you. Next slide, please. And then to kind of close out our presentation, back at the beginning of our budgetary presentation, our wellness coordinator and the health and wellness of our men and women of our organization was listed as one of our critical needs for the department, and we thought this was a good time to give a brief update on where we are with our program and some things that we're currently working on. I'm going to kind of glance over a very long list, and I know council was very interested in why we were taking so long hiring a wellness coordinator. It proved to be a little bit more challenging than we anticipated in the beginning. As critically important is—as having a wellness program is, even more critically important is making sure that we have the right person for this position, someone that has the experience, the expertise, but more importantly, the personality and the demeanor to make the right connection with the men and women of this department, which will lead to the ultimate success of this program or failure if we choose wrong. We went—we interviewed several people with the sheriff, and as you can see, we—back in July 24th of this year, we were able to hire Crystal Erickson as our new wellness coordinator. She has hit the ground in a sprint, and we've actually had to kind of pull the reins, more than prod along, which is absolutely fantastic. Crystal comes to us with tremendous amount of experience in the fitness industry, fitness, nutrition, works with physical therapists, and has worked with law enforcement, and has been a family member of first responders. So she also fits that need that has often been a gap in law enforcement, is connecting the families of the men and women that serve. And her expertise has allowed her to come in and hit the ground running with programs that she already had in place. We have developed a mission and a vision for our wellness program. We did that because it's just like the mission, vision, and values of the Sheriff's Department. It helps us stay on track and stay focused and not get sidetracked to make sure that we're putting a program together that's best for the men and women of this organization. We've built this program around five pillars: the physical fitness, mental health and well-being of our individuals and families, nutritional health, financial health, as well as family health and well-being. Some things that we've kind of put together as a highlight, and we could talk for an hour on things that we're working on, but some of the focuses is—we put together a wellness work group within the Sheriff's Department. We have men and women who cover every facet of this department, from corrections to every detachment, patrol, investigations, and professional staff, to make sure that we're gathering what people really need and what they want, and these men and women are now ambassadors for this program. One of the things that we've recently started doing is we picked a day where we put out wellness information. We call it Wellness Wednesdays. So every Wednesday, information goes out to the entire organization on wellness, fitness, nutrition, financial health, family health. Everything that goes out is tied to our five pillars. Some things that we've done around physical fitness, stretching and mobility and exercise training. Just this morning, Crystal was at South Hill turnout and provided stretching and mobility exercises for our men and women in patrol that they can do in uniform if they begin in the shift, and this is done for two reasons. One, to make sure that mobility is there, but ultimately to reduce the risk of injury in the future. She's provided workouts. She will post workouts of the day, has different workout groups. She has put together lists of gyms throughout the region that our folks can go attend, as well as different events and competitions. We're working on hosting wellness fairs here in the near future. Our mental health is a key component, as you're well aware of the presentation from many of you that were here when we presented on the wellness program. We have partnered and provided training on mental health and wellness. We have a licensed therapist that has done a phenomenal job coming in, providing training, and being a resource during critical incidents, as well as just kind of melding into our culture and being there for the men and women who have taken advantages of reaching out for mental health opportunities that I've not seen in my 28 years in law enforcement, which I think we should all be proud of, because that's kind of the change in culture that we're looking at in this profession. As we talked, a lot of times when you see unhealthy interactions in the public, whether it be on the news or YouTube, oftentimes, that's not bad cops. It's just cops who have—they're unhealthy themselves, and they tend to have unhealthy interactions. So we're hoping to really turn that tide as a profession. We have agencies who have reached out to us to see what we're doing as well. On the nutritional side, she's providing information on a weekly basis on different topics, whether it be the importance of hydration, the importance of protein, or a balanced diet. We're currently working with the county on providing—they're called micro-markets. Some of you might be familiar with them. Other law enforcement agencies provide them, but these are paid for by the employees. They're set up in work locations where we can provide healthier options for the men and women of this department: fresh salads, sandwiches, wraps, fruits, vegetables, something better than just doing a—going through a drive-through late at night or in the middle of the day, or when you have 10, 15 minutes to eat. So we're looking at a pilot program currently for headquarters, as well as our South Hill precinct, monitor that, and then see how that transpires here in the future. She also has the ability to do nutritional coaching herself and has started doing that with some of our men and women, partnering with nutrition specialists, as well as—we have an event already scheduled for November 6th on doing some body composition scannings for the men and women, so they can kind of monitor progress. This has become important in the fitness industry, and we're one of only two law enforcement agencies that I'm aware of in the state that are hosting this type of an event. From the financial health side of it, we're partnering with organizations to provide financial planning, budget planning, wills. Most law enforcement officers are not the most proficient in doing that. It's kind of like one of those, I don't want to have a will because I don't want to recognize that that's a risk. We just put out information that she located of some free will preparation and planning that's put through some—from some public and private entities that put this on for law enforcement around the state of Washington, and looking at debt consolidation and reduction. And then finally, to connect with our families, we're looking at a couple options of doing— we're looking at a couple of options of doing like a spouse academy. We often forget about the impacts of this profession and the toll that it takes on, you know, the spouses and significant others and the children. We spend a lot of time front-loading the new deputies and correction deputies on, hey, this is what you expect. We don't share that information and kind of connect on the backend. So we're really hoping to close that gap here in the coming months. And then in April or early May of this year, we're going to start hosting activity fairs or activity events. We're going to do these twice a year. So in the spring and then the fall, we're going to partner with different community groups and activity groups to have come to our locations, invite our employees, invite their families to come in and find activities to kind of detach from the profession but reconnect with their families. For years, we've talked about the importance of maintaining a healthy physical and mental health is to have hobbies, activities, detach, have a life outside of law enforcement. We're going to now follow through and provide a lot of those opportunities, whether it's hiking clubs or mountain biking clubs or fly fishing, different type of events for spring and summer months, as well as partnering with some organizations that focus on winter activities and things like that for when the weather changes. So that's just a quick skim, trying to be respectful of time on—it took us a while to get there, but we're making incredible strides. The feedback from the men and women of our department and how accepting they have been of the wellness program and Crystal has been nothing short of surprising and inspirational. So we hope to come back here in the near future and share some more about the program. And we're quickly realizing that in order to maintain a program of this size with an organization our size, we'll likely be back in the future asking for additional funding for maybe some programs that we're looking at, as well as additional staff to make sure that we can be the leader within, you know, the region and the state of Washington when it comes to wellness for our men and women. Because in the long run, that's going to be a huge recruiting tool for us.
Thank you. Seems not only like a recruiting tool, but helping us retain folks and show our appreciation and keep their mental fitness so they can show up and do their best work and also help with our labor industries workers' compensation costs.
Absolutely. Yeah, everything is focused on injury prevention. You know, the whole goal is we want to hire healthy people when they come in the door. We want them as close to that median health physically and mentally when they retire.
Thank you. Questions about this or anything we've heard from Chief Roberts? We'll start with Vice Chair Campbell.
Just wellness coordinator, that's not a new program in this budget?
No, that was just one of our critical challenges that we wanted to take the opportunity to give council an update on because it's kind of been long overdue with our challenges.
Okay. And is there any additional ask around wellness in this budget?
Not yet.
No, but you promised to come back asking for more money.
I'll be back tomorrow if you want. But yes, in the future, we want to make sure that we are able to sustain this, and we don't want to come just ask just for the sake of asking. We want to have a plan in place with measurables on the backside of that to show, not only for our individuals but for council, that we're getting the best budget and helping out our employees and making sure that we are improving the overall goal of their health and wellness.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Herrera?
Thank you, Chair. And Councilmember Campbell did ask the same question, if this was a new program in the budget. It sounds like it's not, but thanks for the briefing. Important stuff, you know, just got done with a briefing of how long it takes to recruit somebody, train them, get them on there. And, you know, we know from the past that police officers usually have a really short, one of their shortest life expectancies out there. And, you know, police officers don't talk about their problems at home and things like that. There's all kinds of issues, and seeing a proactive wellness program in our department here is—that's good stuff. And I'm very happy to hear that there's good feedback from it, so.
Yeah, thank you. Just real quick, we've got a meeting next Friday with an expert in metabolic syndrome, which many of you are familiar with, and screening and how we can put things in place. So we're hitting the ground running with that, so.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Hoover?
Thank you, Chair, and you're very persuasive. I'm wondering, is one enough for the rig?
Currently, it is. You know, two is always better, but we can't do with less than one. But in the past, the rig has had two when it was funded and there was contribution from other agencies. But this is a lot of information coming in, the world that we live in, for one person to go through. So we'll see how this goes if we're granted the authority to bring this in-house and we can monitor that. And if we can justify the need for a second, then we will definitely monitor that and be able to better ask for that in the future.
Thank you. Because I just—with the types of things we have in this county, it just—I wonder if one's enough. And so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell?
We haven't even touched on it yet. The mental health co-responders that we have are paid for out of funds from MultiCare, I believe. Is that correct? I know that might not be your—
I believe so. I don't want to misspeak.
No.
I believe it's not, now that I look back and see heads shaking in opposite direction.
Come up, Chief Wallen.
Good afternoon now. And I know since I haven't been up here since before the break, again, I'll introduce myself. Lauren Wallen, I'm our chief of staff. You had a question about our co-responder program and the funding for that. It is now—of the positions on there, we have—almost every position is funded through the behavioral health fund. So the new tax that went into place pays for that. There is one position that comes from the general fund, and I believe that's managed by Human Services. Is that correct? That is ours. So there is one position that's in our budget.
What's it originally grant or did?
So the original, very first position did come from the county's general fund for that. All of the additional positions beyond that were all grant-funded positions through multiple different grant sources. Those grants were all expiring. And I'll also be really honest that when you're managing a team, but you've got three different grant funding sources, and they all have different reporting requirements, and they all have different financial pieces, and they all have different softwares that they require you to use and interfacing. And it was—it was a tremendous amount of work that was being done just to manage the requirements of the grants and taking our staff away from doing the work out on the streets. A lot of those grants, we knew that were going to be ending. Some of it was True Blood funding as well. And to have that all come under one source of funding was a tremendous, tremendous blessing for that program. It also provided stability for those employees in those positions versus constantly wondering, oh, you're on this grant and your position's going to be funded—funding will be up in six months and mine's going to be up in a year from now, when it's a very, very competitive field with tremendous demand and very limited supply. It was a real blessing for our folks to know that they're all under one source and one umbrella and provide that stability for the team.
Challenges that our human service organizations face every year.
Yes.
And we ask more of them every year in their grant reporting.
Indeed.
A good voice there. What I was trying to get at is with a wellness coordinator, have we opened up conversations with MultiCare or Franciscan or any of the others to see if they'd want to help fund a wellness coordinator within our department? And so that would be my pro—suggesting going back to see if any of the local hospitals. I know that they put a combined couple million dollars into the Parkland area for the Blue Zones Initiative over wellness. Could they expand that to the Parkland precinct? Could they expand that to Parkland-South Hill precincts? And so maybe see if there's a way that they would help.
I think that's certainly something that we can look into. I think that's a great suggestion. And as we've just had Crystal in this position since July, and as you can hear, I mean, she, to say the least, hit the ground running. But when you get someone in fitness, I guess that's what you get, lots of energy and enthusiasm, which is fantastic. But I think that's a great suggestion for us to look into and see what the possibilities are for further expansion or enhancement of the program.
That's all I had on this.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. That was the last slide, prepared slide from the sheriff's department presentation this morning. I'm going to open it up for any and all questions related to the sheriff's department budget, perhaps an item that we did not have—that was not presented on, but is on the minds of council members. I do want to do everything we can to adjourn this meeting so we can give everyone a lunch break in time for our afternoon session and things staff needs to do so that my colleagues can help me manage our time. I really would like to try to adjourn our session here no later than 12:15 if at all possible. So please help me manage time. Vice Chair Campbell?
Well, I can try, but we haven't touched most of the budget here today. We've discussed a few programs. Animal control jumps 17%. And I'm curious about why we're seeing a 17% jump in animal control. A little more talk around why we're seeing double-digit decreases in number of deputies. Some of these programs are increasing 50%. Is there going to be another briefing on some of these details or?
Though we can certainly can provide additional information following this meeting on any of those specific items that you have. I can speak to the Humane Society and animal control costs related to that. This is, again, it's one of those costs of doing business that Chief Jackson had alluded to. It's—the medical costs have gone up quite a bit. And the Humane Society, these are the rates that they charge us. We have gone through extensive negotiations with them, and it's very challenging for us. It's—there's limited providers for these services. They have cited for us increased medical costs, increased staffing costs as well. So it's a challenge, and it's the cost of doing business when there's very few providers for us.
I know they're trying to buy a new building, but this seems to be a way—so, I mean, I guess I'd like to put on the record a proviso to do a study of animal control services within the next biennium to see if we can find more cost-effective ways. I know there's other communities that are already looking to pull out of the same organization for the same reason. We have some of the deputies—we're to go here. Did I turn my page? I think we are seeing—sorry, Chair.
No, I want to be—this is a really important budget, and we very well can invite the sheriff's department back to have calm, good conversation with the sheriff's department to make sure we understand their budget needs. So let's work together. If the council really does want more time, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I think I saw in here that we went from—oh, there it is—202.5 FTEs to 188.5. First question, are patrol officers allowed to work half-time? But we're funding a half-time position?
That's a—Chief Nick Hauser again. That's a half-time position that's budgetarily split between corrections and law enforcement to provide a detective sergeant and internal affairs, I believe.
That makes more sense. It just seemed odd. But to the bigger question there, we're seeing a 12, 13, 14-person drop in the request for deputies. We saw where some were being moved, but is 188 on the street enough?
So I think we also did a 12 FTE reduction in deputies to account for the mandatory budget reduction. We had no other way to reduce the budget without the elimination of FTEs.
But at 188, is that enough deputies on the street?
As the sheriff mentioned originally, we feel that our FTE count now still makes us under what we really need. And we understand we're coming here asking to reduce the FTE count. However, when that FTE—when we get to a point with our hiring back there, that we'd come back to council and ask to have those reinstated, for lack of a better word.
What is your current FTE count?
Plus or minus. One of the slides, slide five.
336 in law enforcement commissioned officers, 302 corrections commissioned officers.
Right. But how many on deputy sheriff? It's 180. We're saying 188. Currently, we're at 300?
Oh, you're—the rank of deputy?
Right.
Oh, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head, rank of deputy. That was total commissioned positions, the 336.
Right. But the cuts coming in the rank of deputy, and so—
Yes.
I don't think 188's enough, so I want to know next year how many you're going to be coming back asking for. Because while—for very good reason, we have the over-hire, if you're going to be coming back—and given what we've done in here with vacancy savings, normally when we come back, if we had an over-hire, we'd use vacancy savings. They're not going to be there for us.
Right. And based on our projections, we think that we'll be able to hire up to where our new vacancy rate will be in the next two years. So potentially, we'll be in the next biennium budget before we hopefully—or not hopefully, but before we have to come back and ask for additional staff.
Okay.
Potentially. It's hard to say. If we get to a point, like you mentioned earlier, sir, we get to a point where we're fully staffed and there's an opportunity to hire somebody else, we'll do—we'll try that over-hire.
I encourage it. I just fear we may be putting ourselves in a bad position to where mid-biennium or halfway through the second year, you're coming in asking for money that—
I think we understand 100%, but we had no other way to meet the budget reductions than—other than to eliminate FTE positions.
Under operations contracted staff, you have an absolute change in expenditure of 4.2 million. FTEs remain the same. So how are we seeing a $4.2 million reduction with a FTE number remaining the same? I think someone's coming into lifeline for you here.
Yes.
Donald Leferyer, Business and Financial Operations Manager, Sheriff's Department.
Good one.
I'm sorry, did you repeat the question exactly?
So I'm looking at the line item, operations contracted services, and we have a $4.2 million reduction in expenditures. Staffing remains the same. Should have there been a drop in staffing? I'm thinking that might be the Pierce Transit contract.
I don't actually—go ahead, Julie. Do you have the answer? And it is for that, okay.
If you could repeat that and do the microphone.
The staffing in the current biennium is reduced because we've—the Transit contract, so.
Okay. So where is this $4.2 million reduction that should also show up in funding sources? A—how much money are we losing by not being reimbursed by Pierce Transit?
Roughly the same amount of the expenditure. They're equal. And the positions that were—we lost through the contract, they actually were just reallocated over into our general fund staffing.
Okay. There it is on the first line up there. Okay, I see it now. So we had a reduction of about 3.8 million in charges for revenue and reduction in costs of 4.296. Okay. Going through, I have a few more marks here. I'll go ahead and stop to see if others have questions, so I don't have all of it and then come back.
And we can schedule another session.
Yeah.
In order to getting to time, I wanted to thank my staff for putting together a pretty straightforward presentation and for the support we've had from all of you over the years to make this work. One of the things that we haven't talked a little bit about is even though we have these people that we need to hire, the 20 or 30, whatever, to get to that point, we still have a big attrition landslide coming towards us. We've already identified 10 people that will be leaving between January and March of next year. And that's because they're in their mid-30s. It's time for them to retire, and they've decided to do that. And so we not only are going to try and hire those 28 or 30 people to get to our level, we've got to fight the people that are leaving. So I expect us to hire 50 or 60 and still not be at that particular level at that top. But I agree with Councilmember Campbell that we will need—if—we do need to over-hire, and we do need to come back and ask for more people. It's a double-edged sword. There will be no salary savings, but that's our goal is to get there. So our goal is to gain people, increase minimum staffing in our residencies, increase staffing in our patrol divisions. We have many calls on the boards in the morning that go unanswered. We're hours and hours to get to routine calls. We'd like for all that to go away, and that's our goal. And we plan on getting there, and that'll open up a whole nother set of budgetary issues. It's a good problem to have once that happens.
It will be. Sheriff, thank you for being with us. I am going to ask our staff to work with you and your team, Sheriff, to schedule—let's find another hour. Let's try to find it next week if we can. This budget is really important to the county council. This budget is really important to the county council. Let's find another hour to fit in, to ask more, now that we've got our arms around the budget a little bit more, there's going to be more questions to make sure we understand it and that we're resourcing the budget, the department appropriately. So that's what I'm going to ask us to do in follow-up.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, Sheriff. Councilor Hoover, are you willing to hold your questions for the next session, or does it have to be done right now?
It doesn't necessarily have to be done, but I just was wondering if I could kind of a quick update at the beginning when you had mentioned about a task force, and I want to make sure that we have the funding for that in here and what they would do, because that's.
Well, task force isn't, isn't the correct word, but it would seem like that. One of the projects that we tried to do last year, or a year and a half ago, is find the top 100 criminals throughout Pierce County with all the cities involved and with help from other agencies to round them up. We started one night, and then unfortunately, at 7 o'clock the next morning, Deputy Don Claude and Rich Scaniff were shot, and Don was killed, kind of putting into that because it just switched everything up amongst the police world. So I am working with the prosecutor and some of the courts and drug courts, people that have absconded. We're trying to identify the 100 most wanted, and when we get to the point, we are going to go after them again, thinking that will make a big reduction in crime. We've got to make sure there's room and corrections. The prosecutor's on board to make sure the judges know that these people were targeted for a specific reason. Hopefully, we'll get some bail and hold them. And we have commitments from the FBI, the Marshals Office, and the Joint Terrorism Task Force, as long as other, with other police agencies in the county to get on board to help us do that. It'd be something that we'd launch quietly and work for two weeks, see who we could round up and pick up. We would do that on some of the overtime money, and then we would use Crime Stoppers and other programs to go out to the public to try and help get the others picked up. We believe by doing that, we could take some of the most prolific criminals off the streets, would make a big dent in crime. Same with the car theft. We know it's the same kids, the same groups of people stealing three to five cars a day and crashing through stores, and then coming with another stolen car as their escape car. So we have some things called Star Chaser we can fill you in later about, and we have some things with our air units, and we have some new takedown techniques on stolen cars where we don't have to get in pursuits that we're working on. So we plan on doing some of those type of activities as well to reduce the number of stolen cars and try and hold this small group of people cannibal that are causing the majority of the problem.
Thank you, and that, we can do more next time. Thank you.
Thank you. I know there, I know there's lots of interest and several more questions to understand all this. There is pizza here for everybody, so there's more than enough pizza in the break room. Please join us if you have the time. Mr. Bokey, we, let's please work with the Sheriff Command staff. Let's see if it's possible with their schedule to possibly, if it works for their schedule, to possibly continue this in the afternoon session after the lunch break. If it doesn't work for their schedule, we will invite them back next week for an hour. So I'm going to ask you to work on that on my behalf. If they're not available, because they weren't, their schedules didn't allow at the 1:30 afternoon block, then so be it. We'll find time next week, but see if that works.
Okay.
And I'm going to ask members, if we can please continue this discussion for the next session, whenever that works for the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you.
I want to thank you sincerely for starting this really important discussion. Thank you for the really incredible, the men and women of the Sheriff's Department does on our behalf. We are very invested in your success and your safety, and we're going to, we look forward to the continued discussion, and we'll find another block of time.
Thank you.
If there's no other hands, I do want a break for lunch, and we're going to come back at 1:30, perhaps with the Sheriff's Department, but we also have the Superior Court scheduled this afternoon and Juvenile Court scheduled this afternoon, and we'll find the appropriate time that works for the Sheriff's Department to continue our questions and dialogue. Seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council and Committee, the whole, we are adjourned.